It is six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners to order for Thursday, May 18th, 2023. I will give the invocation tonight, and I've asked Commissioner Tosterson if he'd lead us in the pledge. If you would stand with us, please. Father, we just thank you, first of all, for who you are. We thank you for your presence in this place. Pray that you would guide us through this agenda tonight. We want to thank you, Father, for our men and women of Glen County that work for Glen County government. We want to thank you for our servicemen and women. Father, just keep your hedge of protection around them. And for our first responders, to keep your hedge of protection around them. We just thank you for this beautiful place in which we get to live, and we just thank you for these and all your many other blessings, and as in your name we pray. Amen.
Could everyone face the flag hand on heart?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
We have some groups here with us tonight that we are going to present proclamations to. However, we don't have the proclamations right now. So if you'll just bear with us, we're going to move down the agenda. They will be here momentarily, I promise. With that, Mr. Vice.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer item eight to approve nominations for consideration to the joint city-county appointment to serve on the Glen Brunswick Memorial Hospital Authority. The hospital authority will make the final appointment. The term begins immediately upon appointment and ends April 30th, 2027.
All right, we have a motion to defer item number eight. Do I have a second? I've got a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Item made is deferred.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for general business unless any commissioner would like to pull any item.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, thank you. And as promised, our first proclamation this evening is for National Safe Boating Week, and I'll read the proclamation. For over 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity from coast to coast and everywhere in between. People are taking to the water and enjoying time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly 83% of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communication equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober while navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to the important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, 75% of these fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn life jackets. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Glen County Board of Commissioners do hereby support the goals of Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 20 through 26, 2023 as National Safe Boating Week and the start of a year-round effort to promote safe boating and urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and to wear a life jacket at all times while boating. In witness thereof, I set my hand this 18th day of May, 2023. And if our friends from the Coast Guard would come forward, please.
Y'all probably ought to get out the light.
When y'all leave the light.
Wait.
service are vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, law enforcement officers, dispatchers, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and trained members of the public. And whereas emergency medical providers, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the residents of Glen County benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Glen that the week of May 21 through 27 is Emergency Medical Services Week. In witness thereof, I set my hand this day. Chief Enney, coming forward. Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Glen County represent a world-renowned recreational resource, and whereas Glen County beaches are used and enjoyed by hundreds of thousands of residents and visitors each year, and whereas the beach environment has dangers, particularly longshore currents and rip currents, that can effectively, can be effectively managed through public awareness, education programs, and the vigilance of professional lifeguards. And whereas the 2022 Glen County Recreation and Parks Beach Lifeguard Team performed 467 water assist and 10 water rescues and provided first aid treatment to 144 beach goers and treated 1,375 people with jellyfish stings. And whereas, for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the beach environment is appropriate at the beginning of a busy summer beach season, and whereas Glen County residents and visitors are reminded to adhere to the following beach and water safety tips: Learn to swim. Swim near a lifeguard. Swim with a buddy. Use sunscreen and drink water. Obey posted signs and beach flag warning systems. Keep the beach and water clean. Learn rip current safety and enter water feet first and wear a life jacket. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that May 22 through 29, 2023 shall be recognized as National Beach Safety Week in Glen County. All county lifeguards and first responders involved in beach and water rescue operations shall be recognized for their efforts to keep beach goers and swimmers safe as they enjoy our beaches this summer. Witness thereof, my hand this day, 18th of May, 2023. And if our lifeguards and safety and Ms. Lisa, if you would come forward.
Mr. Chairman, as you get them organized, we would like to request that they introduce each one of themselves as a new team on the beach there.
All right, and if you would, would you introduce yourselves, starting on the back row, and we'll come and explain.
Jonathan Seagull.
Taylor McPittit.
Aubrey Durant.
Jacob Brooks.
Brandon Duff.
Hello, I'm Abby Rosswell.
Perry Klein.
Alana Allison.
Paige Sikes.
Heidi Fox.
And we think y'all been through the lifeguard safety and certified beach lifeguards. Yeah, what a team. Thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you. 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 We'll now enter our public hearing section. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to represent your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Item number nine is ZM 5428. This is Settler's Cove, having trouble speaking, it appears. Settlers Cove Plan Development District. Consideration of an application to create a planned development PD district on parcel 03-03658 and 03-03659 on Glendale Drive to allow for single-family homes, townhouses, duplexes, and multifamily uses within the PD. The parcels are currently zoned R9, One Family Residential and Medium Residential MR. Jonathan Roberts Civil Engineering Agent for Clint Miller, COM Investments LLC Owner. And Ms. Leaf, welcome tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager, ZM 5428. This property is located along Glendale, so near highway or near exit 36. So Mr. Miller had done a similar development a few years ago called Settlers Cove, which is right here. It's turned out to be a very nice development. He had also rezoned to medium residential, and so he's interested in doing the same thing with property adjacent to it. So it is currently a mixed zoning of MR and R9, and it would also go to MR. And so he would, the permanent uses would be single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, multifamily. He also had a site plan that was presented to the Mail and Planning Commission at their last meeting in early May, and it was approved with the condition, of course, only if the rezon is approved by the Board of Commissioners. So as you can see at the top of the screen, Phase 1 is the existing Settlers Cove development that's been developed, and then this is the proposed development in this Phase 2. The Mail and Planning Commission considered this on May 2nd, was unanimous with one Commissioner absent, and they recommended to the Board approval as presented. And these are your possible motions, and the motion on the screen is based off of the MPC's recommendation for your consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Jake Hightower from Robert Civil is here representing the applicant this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Before we open the public hearing, Commissioners, do we have any comments?
Stephanie, do we know, just curious, what they, what the rents would be for this development?
I'm not sure if I could defer to the applicant on that. I haven't heard what the rates will be for the rentals.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments before we open public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing, and as I stated, each side will have 30 minutes. Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of ZM 5428, please come forward and state your name for the record, please. Anyone to speak in opposition, ZM 5428, Settlers Cove. All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Any that wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5428, please come forward to state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil. Thank you for the time to speak tonight. This is a PD text for an existing development. To answer Mr. Booker's question, the rates should be the same as what they are now, which is, I believe, their market rate. But I could ask Mr. Miller and get back with you on that answer. But to my knowledge, it would be market rate, just like they are right now. One note about this development is that there's been some other developments in the area, and this was one that we kind of pointed to as an example of what other developments should be held to for that standard. It's very clean, a very well-built development, and we thank you for your time to consider this, and we ask that you approve as presented and after public comment, or now, if there's any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else that would come to speak in favor of ZM 5428? All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Stephanie, would you put the motion back up, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 5428 as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, and first heard Commissioner Clark as the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 10, ZM 5431, Obrecht Real Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an amendment to the Obrecht Real Plan Development District, ZM 5107, approved master plan to allow residential development adjacent to State Highway 82. The approximately 20-acre property is located at 3484 Highway 82, parcel number 03-19936. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineer Agent for Obrecht Real Properties, applicant and Bo Power Inc. owner. And again, Ms. Leaf, thank you.
Thank you. So this is ZM 5431, and this particular property is just past the Majestic Oaks entrance near exit 29 off of 82. You may recall, within the last, I think, year, year and a half, this property had come before the Mail and Planning Commission, the Board, to basically consolidate a couple different PDs that pertain the property, just in order to kind of clean that up, make one PD that applied to all of it. And the PD included multifamily development as well as commercial along the Highway 82 frontage. And so this particular, and this is a property right here. So this is the entrance to Majestic Oaks. This is Highway 82. The historic Scarlet Family Cemetery is right here, and then this property surrounds it. So when they had come before the Board in the previous master plan, they did amend it to, as I mentioned, with the multifamily as well as the commercial. So this blue area along Highway 82 was only supposed to be commercial, or if there wasn't a residential, it needed to be combined with commercial. So for example, you could have retail on the ground floor, a residential unit on the second floor, but you couldn't have any standalone residential. And the residential would only be allowed in this green. And so what they are doing here, there's no changes to the plan development text. They're only changing the master plan. As you can see, the colors stay the same, and the only difference where this arrow is pointing is this blue area will now allow commercial or residential. So the same kind of multifamily that's allowed in the green, you could also do in the blue if this is approved. And the reason for that is the current developer has an interest in only doing a residential project, not any commercial at all within this property. So this is their current proposal. On the bottom of the screen, just to orient you, this is Highway 82. They did go before the Mail and Planning Commission in early May for site plan approval, and the site plan was approved contingent upon a rezon being approved by the Board. They are showing their only egress or ingress egress is off of Highway 82, so GDOT would need to approve that onto the property. They are not showing any kind of access going on to Majestic Oaks. And they do have a mix of kind of individual standalone homes as well as townhome units. There's some amenities, there's a dog park, playground, pool area. And the Planning Commission did consider this in May, early May, on May 2nd, and it was unanimously recommended to the Board approval as presented with one Commissioner absent. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. Hightower is here representing this application as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners.
Ms. Leaf, how they, what are they, are they doing any kind of gating around the cemetery or anything?
Yeah, that's a good question. That did get brought up by some Mail and Planning Commissioners as well, is just looking at, you know, both visitors to the cemetery as well as people living there, you know, how will everything be kind of, you know, kept safe and separate? They are proposing fencing around the cemetery as well as a buffer. So that would, you know, would keep, you know, keep those areas separate as best it can.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, I know everybody does feel comfortable, you know, living next to the cemetery.
Right.
I'm with you, Alan. I was gonna ask the same question.
All right, anything else before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing for ZM 5431, Obrecht Real Plan Development District Amendment. Anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name for the record, please, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm happy to tell you that for the first time-
Your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, James Harden. I guess I'm getting too familiar. For the first time that I've been in front of you, I'm not entirely in opposition to anything. The last time we were here regarding zoning changes for this particular area, one of the things that you gentlemen assured myself and my neighbors was that you're going to maintain separate access and everything. And I thank you for keeping that promise, or whoever is making sure to follow the notes from prior hearings. I just wanted to speak to hopefully get some clarification. There's been so many changes made to this area, this particular property, I'm having a hard time keeping up with everything. And somebody, perhaps Ms. Leaf, can correct me if I'm wrong, when I say that was my understanding that this particular 20 acres was already taken out of the PD and zoned local commercial a long time ago. If the plan is to put it back into the PD, okay, that would make a lot of sense. And my other question is, is, you know, we have a site plan for this particular 20 acres, 19.88, whatever it is. Is this going to be the blueprint for the rest of it? Is there anything? I tried to find things on the site, and I kept coming to dead ends. I guess I need more access or, what do you call it, authorization? Is this going to, like, for example, on the back end of that, and then it's going to be like another phase for the rest of that particular slot, and then over across? And ultimately, are we going to connect? I mean, I just, I just wanted some clarification, that's all. I'm actually happy to see this type of plan. I'm happy to see residential for the first time and not commercial. You know, it's been a long battle. So those are my comments, and if any of the Commissioners have an answer, I'd love to hear from you, or if Ms. Leaf can clear it up for me.
All right, sir, thank you. Ms. Leaf, do you have any answers, or do we want to wait till Mr. Hightower comes up and let him address it? All right. All right. Anyone else that would speak in opposition to ZM 5431? Last call. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close that portion. Those who wish to speak in favor of ZM 5431, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil. Thank you for the chance to answer some of the questions brought up by the Commission as well as Mr. Harden. I'm glad to hear that he's pleased with residential because that's our intention. The good thing about a site plan going with a zoning is that you see exactly what the intention is. A lot of times, we like to try to show a concept of what we want to do. In this case, we're actually showing truly the site plan of all the work that's gone into this development. In terms of the access, yes, sir, we are having a access only to 82, not to Majestic Oaks. The PD question, so this was a, this was brought out of the combined PD into its own, and all we're doing is PD amendment, so it didn't get out of its own amendment, it's just doing a change to the master plan. I was, you know, careful to not change the language because it's a lot more simple to just say, hey, this is what we're trying to do, we're just trying to allow just regular residential along the road. As it sits today, they could do a combination of commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor, increase a lot of traffic with that product, and that's without tonight, but that's not the intention. They just want to do just pure residential. So that kind of speaks to the PD. In terms of the other vacant land around there, that's a different owner, Spartan Development. This is a separate entity, separate owners, they're completely exclusive of each other, no plans that I'm aware of. It's the Obrecht Real Properties Group and Spartan is completely different. We did talk to Spartan before this, just to tell them that this is what the plan is. But in terms of, you know, shared uses, anything like that, there's no plan whatsoever, completely separate. With that, and then also, just around the cemetery, yes, the plans to do the fence, buffer off of it. The attorney for the owners or the potential owners did try to find some ownership of that parcel, and he was willing to do an affidavit to say that he couldn't find anybody. But that's why I just said, you know, it's kind of interesting because supposedly in the deed, they could acquire the entrance, but I told them, with historic cemeteries, leave it alone, buffer off of it, we'll do a nice screen. Yes, folks don't like to live next to cemeteries, but with a nice screen with their own access to it, people will be in that pool and not know it's right beside it. So that was a suggestion we had, and they're sticking with that as well. There's some good renderings of what the townhouses and the single-family homes are supposed to look like. Another good point is that this is about 50% the density, even though it looks dense from this view, on a top view, it's about 50% of what it could be. It could get much more dense if it was to go to three stories with 16 units an acre. Right now, I believe we're in the eight units an acre in that realm. So again, this is a very, again, a good development that we're excited to present to you tonight. We ask that you approve this amendment so that we can continue with our site plan and the rest of the design, and also available for any questions as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5431? All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was, well, I was gonna say something, and I'll make the motion. Mr. Hightower, I appreciate you and your team there, because this property, as Mr. Harden had mentioned, going before the Planning Commission and County Commission multiple times, this is one of those times that, you know, everybody worked together for the better of everyone, and especially living in that district, I'm glad to see this one. And I would like to make a motion to approve ZM 5431.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Clark, a second by Commissioner Tosterson to approve ZM 5431 as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 11, ZM 5414, Frederica House Rezone. Consider a rezone for a portion of property located at 96 Atlantic Drive, St. Silens Island, parcel number 04-04988, from One Family Residential R6 to Local Commercial LC, to allow a drive-through window and lane to be added to the existing Frederica House Restaurant. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineer Agent for Tom Mitchell, Fred House LLC, applicant and owner. Clerks, note, this item was updated on May 17, 2023, to reflect the recommendations from the May 16, 2023 IPC meeting. Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. ZM 5414. So this is existing Frederica House Restaurant and the parking behind it. So they are interested in doing a drive-through window and lane for the restaurant. In addition, the parking that's at the rear of the property has been R6-zoned, and so it's technically not really a compliant use in the R6 zoning, because we don't allow commercial parking. So this is an opportunity to clean up that zoning and make that parking that's been out there compliant with the commercial zoning. So this property also includes a 40-foot-wide stretch of former First Avenue right-of-way from Maple Street to Atlantic Drive in the Glen Haven neighborhood. It was abandoned by the county, by the BOC, on February 16th of 2023. It was case number AB4700. And the recommendations that came to you from the IPC, who just met on Tuesday evening, is the applicant actually during the meeting withdrew a portion of the property that was subject to the rezone, and so the recommendation from the IPC is reflective of that. So they wanted to remove the southern portion of the former right-of-way, and this was a portion that would connect it to Atlantic, which has more of the residential traffic. So here is the, here is the property. This, up at the kind of top of the screen is sort of that lighter purple, this is Frederica House Restaurant. This building right here is where there's a pharmacy located. Frederica's off to your right. And then this building here is a vacant convenience store or fuel station, Atlantic right here. So the parking lot that's behind Frederica House is currently zoned R6, and so this is the portion that is part of the rezone still. And so, this is the portion that is no longer part of their rezone request. And so, just kind of an aerial view to orient to, again, the parking lot. This area right here is part of the LC rezone request. The area highlighted or outlined in red is no longer a part of it. And here's just a survey of the property. Zoomed in. And then, the reason that they originally had that leg in there to rezone is as part of the drive-through window traffic configuration, they would, people would come in off of Frederica, they'd come down this former Maple Street and kind of route through this parking lot, come to the drive-through window right here, and then they would exit onto Atlantic. And Atlantic has the traffic signal at Frederica at Atlantic. So, that was the original configuration, and so that's why this was of interest, so you could have the egress here, as well as they were going to add some angled parking And so, the IPC did unanimously approve, we had one, our chair, Ursery, recused himself because he had been, had a conflict, and we had one Commissioner absent, but they did recommend voting, or recommend to the Board of Commissioners in favor of approving the rezone with the modification that the southern 100 by 400 feet of former First Avenue right-of-way would no longer be part of that application. And so, here are your possible motions, and then there is a recommended motion just based off of that IPC recommendation. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Hightower from Robert Civil is also here for this application.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing?
Stephanie, on the part that was removed, that's a 40-foot-wide strip, they wanted the whole 40-foot. Suppose the parking places weren't there and they just had a 20-foot strip, because a road weighs 18 feet roughly. I just, you know, you're dumping traffic back onto Frederica, it seems like it might be safer and easier to come on Atlantic. That's just my thought, I mean, somebody can explain different.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. There's still, you know, to do the drive-through window, I mean, definitely trying to get folks kind of through a window and then back out again, you know, does add some challenges now. But that was part of the discussion IPC talked a good bit about, because this, this is a single-family home right here. Here, I'll go up to the aerial, that helps a little better. So, it's a single-family home right here on this lot, which is really, it's right on the property line, I think even an edge of it might even come into this property. And so, they talked quite a bit about a buffer, so 12-foot-wide landscape buffer would be required along the stretch. And so, that made it extremely tight, if not impossible really, to do a travel lane plus do parking spaces. So, there were just a lot of concerns, just making sure there was enough buffer and that you didn't have a travel lane going right by, you know, somebody's bedroom window at their house.
Well, yeah, I can see that, but it's just, you know, if you took the parking spaces out, you would just have a single lane out.
Right.
Or in. You could, you could direct it either way, you could direct it in from there instead of Frederica. Just, 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 I'm just questioning that.
Yeah.
Stephanie, just so I'm clear, could you sort of trace what the egress is now with the removal of that?
Sure. So, currently what they're, and I'll just caveat this with, so they are rezoning, or the rezone is to kind of straight local commercial. So, there could be any uses that are allowed in local commercial that could go there. So, currently, their, their plan is just drive-through window, but they could also do, you know, expansion to the building, and they could do another building as long as the uses are LC. But under this current, you know, plan, conceptual plan, so they'd come in off of Frederica right here, come in, you know, right by the assisted living between Frederica House and the assisted living, and they'd come into really the back of the parking lot, and this, this portion back here is zoned PD, it's zoned the same as what the assisted living is, and so it's also a parking lot. They'd come through here, and then they, they haven't really submitted a new design that would really show how this, this works now, but potentially, you'd come through the drive-through window and try to reroute back through here. But that's not something I probably would want to try to figure out at this point. But they, they said they haven't really taken a, I talked to Mr. Hightower today, and they hadn't really taken a strong look yet on how that rerouting may, may work with this portion of the property removed now. And they'd really have to maybe redesign where the, where the window even would be to make sure everything could actually kind of flow back out. It was definitely much, much more of a challenge now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
Any other discussion before we open the public hearing?
I guess I would like to know how they plan to get people out of there. I mean, I don't, I'm hoping it doesn't impact the, I guess if there are other single-family homes over there. But, so, I don't know where those homes are, if those, if there are lots back up to that area.
Yeah, this, Commissioner, this doesn't show all the way over to kind of what's behind here, but, but yeah, the, the single-family home here, there's other single-family homes down along Atlantic, and then behind the parking lot, there are single-family homes here. So, the parking lot basically ends right around here, and then there's single-family back on this way. So, really, however the travel lane moves, there's that potential that it would be, you know, running right by. But I mean, they currently have a parking lot, you know, right here that they already have adjacent to them.
Stephanie, as I recall, there's a fence on the back of the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's pretty tall, I don't know how tall, but it's pretty tall.
Yeah, I think it might be like an eight or 10-foot fence, it's a high fence.
Thank you, Commissioner Swett. That was going to be my other question about that. Okay.
All right. Are we ready to open the public hearing? All right, this is ZM 5414, Frederica House Rezone. Any that wish to speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Hugh Bork, I'm a resident of St. Silens Island, my horse and his radius is my investment property. One of them is within, just outside the 200-foot mandatory notification of this zoning request, so I'm close, but not in the legalistic sense. So, I recommend you, this application be denied, or as a minimum, corrected to be a complete application. I spoke to the IPC on this on Tuesday, it was an incomplete application, and I'll get into the details of that as part of the rest of the discussion. So, my objection is on a procedural basis, the idea here is this is the fourth bite of the apple of trying to fix a zoning problem. This area that's left in the application is currently zoned R6, I believe, right? Parking used for commercial applications is not allowed in an R6, so at least this corrects that deficiency. However, we had a crack at it as recently as the Frederica Pharmacy, which is just shown just below this, it's not part of this application, but they have an agreement to utilize that parking lot as part of their operation. Frederica House has the parking lot and actually owns the property, okay? Thrive or Vitality, I believe it's called now, also shares that parking lot. In all of those applications, nobody brought this, and by the way, what's it, Maple Street, when that was abandoned and blocked off because of the Thrive slash Vitality developments, that was also a crack at trying to fix this problem. So, it does fix an ongoing piece, but what it gets to is my major objection on the process. Why didn't we pick that up in any one of those four applications that this was a problem? And it's been operating that way for a good while, okay? So, I commend the owner for trying to fix it, but it's not a complete application. I'm going to ask you guys again, are you listening? And I'm going to tell you by your actions, you are not listening, okay? And I'll amplify on that. The application is not complete. In the application, one of the supplemental information for rezoning request has three questions regarding county and employees having interest in the property. This applies to, this form applies to all applications for rezoning as a, as a part of the ordinance. Do they have financial interest or any other interest in it? To Mr. Ursery's credit, he did recuse himself from it, but one of those questions, does anybody on the county staff and/or commissions have an interest in this property? And the answer was blank. He could have simply said, Ursery, yes, part of it, but he recuses himself simply enough, it was blank, as well as the two other questions on financial and family involvement. These questions are designed to address potential collusion between county officials and the applicants. While I understand there are numerous ways to subvert this intent, and no offense, I'm not saying if it's being, trying to be subverted, but there are any number of ways to do this, the form is part of the ordinance, and I believe the ordinance is a part of the law. Am I correct there, gentlemen? Right? So, it was not completed. I would think you as Commissioners should be concerned about these questions in light of your stated commitment to transparency. Okay? Again, not necessarily directly related to this particular application, but it is part of the process. I was also appalled, the IPC Chair and the Council President just seemed to be ambivalent to the fact that it was not done. Now, in your package, it was not part of the report here, but in your package, are those questions now answered? I don't have a copy of that, it's not available in public space. I'll take the answer as no. They did talk about the changes and the withdrawal of the 100-feet length of the, of the request, but deficiency that was brought up in the IPC has not been addressed to my knowledge. If it has, I'll stand corrected. Mr. Fallon, how many times have you, in your career, have you heard the words, "You get what you condone"? We're condoning anywhere from mediocrity to substandard performance by allowing these levels of details. Gentlemen, those questions are to protect you guys, to somewhat, and also to protect the applicant. You also told your constituents we would see improvements in the new county management, as the new county management was in place. Still waiting, guys. Your actions speak louder than your words. We're going to get better, we have a commitment for this, and yet, I took a six-month hiatus from speaking to you guys, I just grew too frustrated with it. My first worry back into it, guess what? Had a problem. All right? Why is this behavior acceptable? Perfection is not expected, but this is not a one-off. A number of my presentations, both here and at the IPC, have been to this level of detail. And gentlemen, the level of detail that it takes for excellence is exactly what we're talking about here. Okay? And I expect to see some improvement. I recommend this, again, this application be denied based on procedural issues, or as a minimum, if you choose to approve it, which would correct the deficiency, right? At least ask to have the application completed. If you don't want to have the questions asked, take them out of the ordinance, get them off the form, and proceed as you guys would like to in blindness. You continue to suppress the public's ability to participate in your public hearings. This is just one more example of how that's been suppressed and ignored. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition?
My name is Charles Williams, and my wife, Yvonne, and I recently moved here to St. Silens, and we live at 102 Atlantic Drive, which would be essentially two doors down from the drive, the consideration for the drive-through. And we were here to comment about that, and in opposition to the drive-through. But however, as you understand now, that portion's been removed. Our basis was that's a very heavily-traveled area by kids on bikes, walkers, people walk into restaurants in the evening, and to have a drive-through there would have potential liability for those pedestrians and children. Also, now, it's close to a block away from the New Glen Haven Park, and as everyone knows, once it's there, it's going to be a cut-through for everyone to go to other portions. So, that was our consideration, but however, you said that that portion's been withdrawn, I just want to make sure of that. And so, anyway, the rest of the rezoning, we have no opposition to. I mean, it is what it is there, however, that was the portion that we were here to comment on. So, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to ZM 5414? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5414, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. I ask that you approve this rezoning as presented. In terms of Mr. Bork's comments, we did have a conversation after the IPC just recently about the application. We do fill out our applications, and our coordinators do that. There was a blank left there because we were under the impression that there was no interest. We read that as property interest, ownership, not services rendered. There's a Mainland Planning Commissioner who is also a surveyor, he's on a lot of these surveys, I mean, it's services renders, that's not a ownership interest. So, same with the IPC. In our opinion, it was just a, who has ownership? It's Mr. Tom Mitchell who's here tonight, and he can answer any questions if asked upon. In terms of the fourth bite of the apple, zoning's tied to the ownership, and this Thrive owned, you can see the parcel lines right here, Thrive owned what's on the north side right here, so that was there, what they could speak on. This is another parcel right here, which is the pharmacy, so when they do their zoning, they're not tied to this parking lot back here. Mr. Tom Mitchell does own Frederica Pharmacy in this parcel, as well as this parcel of the parking lot, and until recently, he now owns this parcel right here. So, he is the owner, so he's the one doing the zoning requests, and what he's trying to do with this piece back here is get it in compliance with what the use is. There was discussion that, you know, to Mr. Rofalski's point, all I can say is that if there was a drive there, then yes, sir, you would put exiting traffic out to a traffic light versus trying to come to a, basically, I hate the term, but suicide lane that's right across from Colonial. So, you see a lot of folks who dive out of this parking lot. There's also a big opening right here in front of the gas station where, again, folks try to get out. You know, personally, I use Frederica Pharmacy, and I drive down and try to get back into the light right here. So, again, there would be a good use for putting a lane there. How the IPC unfolded is how it unfolded, but again, the owner's here if you'd like to speak to that. And then, I believe that answers Mr. Bork's comments, and we're also here available for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5414? Come forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Tom Mitchell, I own the property we're talking about, and my son and I own it. I assure everybody that nobody in this commission has any interest in our, in our property there, none whatsoever. Now, Mr. Ursery drew a plan originally for the, part of the drive-through, but he has no interest in, in our operation. What Mr. Hightower mentioned was Frederica Road, there's a big issue there because Seapalm's people dive into that lane and try to get out of it, it's a conflict, right, the big time. Now, what we can do is put a roundabout at Palm, Palm Street, the middle lane that gets out of Seapalm's, that would solve the whole problem. If Seapalm's people could then get out, that would slow traffic down on Frederica Road. So, all I'm trying to do is just clean up what's there, and I'm not going to submit the driving at present time. I do reserve the right to do it at a later time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All right, anyone else wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5414? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the drive-through. Is that, Mr. Mitchell, is that going to be a, like, you pull up and you order from, you got a noise, or is it some people call in and order and just drive through and pick it up?
Commissioner, we wouldn't have a box there, you know, like all the other drive-through do, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
More than your hours of operation.
Sir, let's, let's come to the microphone, please.
Well, I have withdrawn, what I've said is I've withdrawn that application at present time, and I've reserved the right to do it again, but maybe breakfast and lunch. You know, we're all just trying to improve our, our businesses and make, and add value to it.
May I want you to answer this question here in order of tios, just ahead of takeout lots?
Ms. Lee, can you point out the...
So they have, as you come through, come through here, there's, see an order box right here, and then there'd be a couple cars stacking, and this would be the window for pickup.
Okay.
Well, that's probably not the design we're gonna have later on. Yes, I know. I understand that. Yes, sir. But I've withdrawn that part.
Okay. And...
For now.
And my question is, and there's been several things of how the traffic flow. We all know Frederica's difficult, and I can appreciate Mr. Mitchell and the roundabout idea. That's a great idea, but for right now, how are we going to, if we do not use that alleyway to get out to Atlantic? I mean, is it gonna be just kinda, they go around the pharmacy this side, they come around this side? I mean, it needs to be uniformed more, you know, because there is a lot of foot traffic, and the last thing we want is somebody getting run over.
If I make another application for the drive-through, I'll have a site plan, I'll talk to the neighbors, and I'll try to deal with your concerns and Mr. Bork's concerns. It'll be a cleaner application, I'll put it that way, if I do decide to reapply.
Okay. And Mr. Mitchell, you might just want to sit on that front row.
Stephanie, I just wanted to know, was the application considered complete by us? And if so, why pertaining to Mr. Bork's question?
Yes. Yeah, we felt the application was complete. I think some of the questions he has were similar to Mr. Hightower's answer. We received the application, and if, you know, a box is not checked, just having any kind of a conflict or an interest, you know, we, they are signing that application as everything is true and correct. So we believe what they're saying to us on that application, and we don't check further into that. So that is something we would have accepted and processed through.
And Ms. Lee, I see Mr. Bork's point. I also see the staff's point. It says, you know, identify all members. There's nobody there, so there are none. But I think, to your point, it would be better if you would put, or have the applicant put no known, you know, blank, you know, not to just leave a blank on the application going forward. And I think we could, you know, it would be in the interest, I believe, of clarification. I think, you know, the applicant, Robert Civil submitting the application on behalf of the applicant, you know, if they needed to ask those questions, then they would need to ask those questions so that there's no ambiguity in that.
And Mr. Chairman, yeah, thank you for those comments, and we'll pass that along to our staff as well, is to just look and make sure that someone has checked at least and not applicable, instead of leaving it blank, so we know that question has at least been considered.
And in addition to the three questions that he had, you know, the campaign contribution is another, just a question to answer, not, you know. I understand it from the staff standpoint. There's nobody mentioned there, so there's nobody that did, but from the public standpoint, I can see, you know, were the questions even asked? So...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I did text Mr. Harris, who's in the audience, and that's something that we're gonna look at as well, when Mr. Bork brought it up. And so we will review it, and we'll make sure that we correct any of those blanks and make sure that they're filled out.
All right. Commissioners, any other discussion?
Just a couple questions. Tom, if you'll come back up just a minute. Stephanie, you just stay right there with him there for a second. It's always simple on St. Simons.
Always.
So I had a couple calls about the alleyway or passageway there, and that you're now stating that you own the whole alleyway and may later apply for...
Yeah, yeah, I'll later apply, of course, if it's, you know, I don't know what the plan is now. Of course, we had, at the IPC, we had some opposition, of course, and we've had some tonight. And I appreciate that. I told the IPC, well, I've lived here, I live right down the road, I understand the concerns, but I think our people have a right to get out to get to the light, now notwithstanding the drive-through. But, you know, other people think differently, and I understand their concerns, the people that live in Atlantic and Glen Haven. But there are five streets to get out of Glen Haven, not just Atlantic, so.
I guess the only thing was...
There's only one traffic light.
The only thing that I have was that, that, the call that I got from a couple people was the house adjacent there or to the west of the alleyway there. Opening that up or as it sits is actually, would be, or as is, non-conforming. And the concern was if it burned down, you know, couldn't be repaired or anything like that. Have y'all got any, how is it that you got the clear title?
If it burned down?
The house that's just west of the alleyway there. The way that house...
It's like 92 Atlantic or whatever that is. Old house.
Right.
I used to own that house.
Well, I know you did. That's why I'm asking you the question.
I don't know. It's in disrepair.
Right.
The house is now...
But you don't own it now?
No, I do not.
Right. Okay. Well, I mean, for traffic purposes, my concern is just what everybody's talking about is, it's not about what you want to do, but the flow of traffic getting in and out of that property, your property in Glen Haven. I think it makes sense for that traffic to come through down to Atlantic and get out through that red light, but, you know, to circle back around your lot, quite honestly, when you're having a good and busy night, it's kinda hard to circle around back there anyway.
Well, it is, and it's impossible to turn left on Frederica Road now, out of there, without the traffic light. Absolutely impossible. And it makes it even worse when the Seapalm's traffic is diving into a turn lane, and you got loggerheads there, and it's tough. The simple solution, as I mentioned tonight, would be a roundabout at Palm Drive, at the middle community. That would just help everything. It'd help us, it'd help everybody, but, you know, that's another.
Roundabouts are simple, but not on St. Simons.
Well, I guess we're gonna do one at Frederica...
I'm saying is that this application was up here before, so I'm thinking maybe bring it back and have further discussions, because it makes sense to flow traffic, even if you narrow it down to Atlantic.
Well, really, what I'm asking for now, Cap, is just to, let's forget about the roundabout for the present time. If we can just, the parking lot, to get that cleaned up, get that zone from R6 to commercial or PD or whatever we're gonna do.
Right.
And the 100 feet that goes from the fence to Old Maple Street, if we can get that cleared up tonight, we'll try to address Mr. Bork's concerns and this couple's concerns later on, and maybe do a different configuration or something, but that's what I'm asking for now, Cap, Commissioner.
And since that has been withdrawn from this application, then I think that, I think we should maybe move on from that.
Okay.
And if he decides later on that he wants to bring it back again, then it's an item that comes back again, and we'll discuss it at length.
Yes, sir.
Well, my only problem as Island Commissioner is just that, you know, I know what he's trying to do. I understand, and we've talked, I've walked on his property, I go eat at his restaurant all the time.
Yes.
Is that we have an opportunity of traffic flow here. I know it got pulled off, but I'm concerned about the customers that are gonna be coming in there and getting out. In other words, your restaurant has got parking based on seating capacity inside.
Yes, sir.
Now you're adding into that capacity by running traffic in.
Well, what I was gonna do is...
Hold on just a second.
Excuse me.
So you got a license for that restaurant and for that capacity?
Yes, sir.
And the parking to go with that facility? And I understand, I'm a business fan too, so I know what you want to do. You want to bring in traffic and have to-go orders, which is what people want to do. It's busy on the island. They don't want to wait.
Especially now.
They want to get some of your good food. But what you're doing is increasing capacity into that property in volume with no real efficient way going back out. And so for me, that's, I'm just stating to you and to my Commissioners, I was kinda wondering why the planning commission wanted to X out you using that alleyway. I'm concerned about people having to loop back out, right out there by Thrive and get back out, just like you don't matter at that Seapalm's.
It's a major problem, and we've got a, we've got a, we've got a, I did something to try to address it. I put a fire lane in out there, which is, but you can't tell where people are gonna park, and a lot of times they'll block it, they'll double park, block the fire lane, and there's no way to get out. Because people turning right, that's kinda tough anyway, but again, you get into that loggerhead situation where the Seapalm's traffic is jumping into that lane so they can make a left turn. It's almost impossible sometimes to make a left turn out of Seapalm's with all those people. That's the reason I mentioned, that would help me a lot if we had a little roundabout, a T-roundabout like on Ocean Boulevard, I mean, over there that we did on the...
I understand that, but we gotta deal with what you've got.
Well, I do. I realize that.
Mr. Attorney, I would like to ask you something.
Just as a thought for everybody.
Mr. Attorney, this is a recommendation to the County Commission. It's not binding that's being presented, is that correct?
As far as the First Avenue portion being drawn, so the applicant did withdraw that at the IPC level.
Okay.
An option the board has this evening is to proceed forward with the application as the applicant has presented, which is just the parking lot. And the applicant is certainly able to go back before the IPC and start that process again with public hearings and everything, and that's what he stated he wanted to do.
That's what he'd have to go back through?
Correct. If he wanted to add that back in...
To put back in the use of First Avenue?
That's correct. That was something that came up at the IPC level. After some questions and answers, the applicant voluntarily withdrew that portion of it and stated he just wanted to proceed forward with the parking lot rezoning.
I mean, I want the man to succeed in business, but we're creating another problem, I think, safety-wise.
Well, and I'll defer to the applicant on what I'm about to say as far as his plans, but as I understand it, the drive-through was predicated on having First Avenue rezoned because the drive-through works with the First Avenue rezoning. Without that, his plans for the drive-through, again, I don't want to speak for his plans, going for what he can and can't do there, but as I understood it, that it'd make it very difficult for him to proceed forward with the drive-through plans without the First Avenue. So he, again, not to tell what he will or won't do, but probably won't go forward with it until, unless he has a design that is feasible.
Yeah. Excuse me, Aaron, but what I was trying to do was, the drive-through was part of it, but for people to have a safe exit out to get to Atlantic, to be able to make a left turn, with the issues about the loggerheads right in front of our place, which we can't help it, I mean, in fact, several people probably live in Seapalm's that would dive out into that turn lane, and that just, you know, you got somebody going this way and somebody going this way. So I was just trying to improve my property in several ways, and the drive-through is an addendum to that, and also for people to, you know, to come and eat it inside to be able to get out with a safe exit to turn left to get, because the growth is north, as we all know, and the traffic situation there is just incredible now. But anyway, but...
So what if you came back and put the alleyway in as accessing down to Atlantic?
That's what I plan to do, Commissioner. In fact, what I'd like to do tonight, if we could, is approve, change the parking lot, which is R6 now, to PD, and the 100 feet from the fence to the Old Maple Drive to get that cleared up, and I will come back later with a more comprehensive plan to try to address everybody's needs for the thing, for the drive-through, alleyway to Atlantic.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve and hold it to your promise of coming back and fixing the traffic flow down to Atlantic.
The public hearing has been closed. Direct it to Ms. Lee. Now. Yeah. Direct it to Ms. Lee.
Oh, this question?
Yes.
Addressing the council, but he said it's closed.
But...
But she can deliver it. Okay. Well, my question is, the council, they're more concerned about drive-through restaurant than they are children and people walking, unlike the drive in the evening, which is dark, a lot of pedestrians, supposedly St. Simons is supposed to be pedestrian for a minute, people out of cars, walking, and now you're dumping traffic onto a busy street with kids a block away from the park that you all support. And that's my question. The council would still attempt on that, that he's concerned about that, but not about the people that are there.
Do you? Well, I can answer that as the Island Commissioner. This application and the approval of it represents, to me, a situation that's common on St. Simons. It's outgrown its capacity, and this is a conflict that's unsafe. It's creating an opportunity to improve it. When he comes back with the application, then we can have another round of discussion on it. Right now, he's confined to his property with the approval of this application.
With the exclusion of that 40 by 100. So your concerns tonight are addressed, and if he, and if he, when he comes back, there'll be another public hearing as far as that would go. Commissioner Fendig, you were making a motion?
Yes, sir.
What was your motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Well, there was a paragraph, the bottom paragraph.
Okay.
Is what we're talking about.
Yeah, because they pulled it out. All right.
And Commissioner Fendig, if I can just make, it should be by 40 feet instead of 400, so there's an extra zero that got stuck in there.
All right.
Thank you.
Only on St. Simons. I move to approve ZM 5414 with modification of removing the southern 100 by 40 feet of the former First Avenue right-of-way from the rezone. Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky to approve ZM 5414 with the modification of removing the 100 by 40-foot former First Street right-of-way.
Before we vote, Mr. Mitchell, are you understanding what this motion is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Items number 12 and 13 affect me personally, so I am gonna recuse myself from the podium while these items are being considered. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number 12, accept a limited warranty deed for rights-of-way within Autumn Wood subdivision identified and described as Autumn Wood Circle East in Autumn Wood Court, and an easement deed for the drainage easements as shown on the Autumn Woods Phase 2 plat approved by the Board of Commissioners as recorded in Plat Book 35, Folio 240, on July 6, 2021. There is a clerk's note that supports documentation for this item was updated on May 17 to include an easement deed for the drainage.
Ms. Lee?
Thank you. So this is a, Autumn Wood Phase 2, Autumn Wood subdivision Phase 2 was approved a couple years ago, but at that time, when that final plat came before the Board of Commissioners, the right-of-way deeds and the drainage easement had not been included in the packet for the Commission's review. And so this came to the county's attention, so this is an opportunity to ensure that the deeds are dedicated and that the county has the opportunity to review those and accept those, as well as this drainage easement. So there is a recommended motion on the screen.
This is not a public hearing, correct?
No, it is not.
It's not?
It's not. Okay. All right, Commissioners, any questions? If not, can I get a motion? If not, can I get a motion?
Here, the bottom box is a possible recommended motion.
I move to accept the limited warranty deed and right-of-way and the easement deed for drainage easements for Autumn Wood subdivision Phase 2.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Number 13, FP 5354, Autumn Wood subdivision, Phase 3A final plat. Approve a subdivision of approximately eight acres into 22 lots and one tract to be named Autumn Wood subdivision Phase 3A, property located at 5122 Highway 99. Portion of parcel number 03-18602 and zone planned development district. ZM 4382, Philip Jackson, Jackson Surveying Agent for applicant for Wayne Neal Regency Land Group, LLC. Joint Water and Sewer has approved with conditions. Clerk's note, support documentation for this item was updated on May 17, 2023, to include drainage access and utilities easement and a temporary drainage access utilities easement.
Okay, thank you. This is the final plat for Adams Woods subdivision Phase 3A, and so there approximately, there are 22 lots plus one tract that are part of this, this Phase 3A. And what was added to the packet last night was a drainage access and utilities easement, and then a blanket easement as well. So those were added to the packet for your review, and the right-of-way deeds are included in your packet as well. And I will also note, there were some questions about some additional documents and our engineering review, or county engineer review, and on the screen, I do have an updated review history to what was in your packet, our county engineer, our assistant county engineer reviewed what was submitted this week, and that was the additional documentation that had been uploaded last night. So this is, this is an updated review as of today, showing that we have everything we need for this item to be considered by the Board this evening. And these are possible motions.
Okay. Any discussion, gentlemen? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners approves application FP 5354 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Clark for approval, and a second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any, any conversation? If not, a call for a vote? All in favor? It's unanimous, 6-0. Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Item number 14, consider adoption of an amendment to section 2-2-44 of the Glen County Code of Ordinances regarding conflicts of interest for individuals appointed by the Board of Commissioners to serve on a committee, board, authority, or commission. This is what we discussed in work session on Tuesday. Mr. Mumford, do you have any comment?
Commissioners, I don't, I don't have any additional to add unless you have any questions for me, but this is the same item that was presented to you on Tuesday.
Commissioners, any, any discussion? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the amendment to section 2-2-44 for the Glen County Code of Ordinances regarding the conflict of interest for individuals appointed by the Commissioners to serve as committee member, board, authority, and commission, and that it would be non-elected officials.
That's correct. It's appointed, appointed individuals, and we do have a definition for that, so Commissioner Tosterson, if I could also ask that you add section 2241, which is in your materials, to that, to that motion as well.
Second.
And I'm, I'm looking for those materials. That's 2-2-41 is, is part of that. Do we need a restatement?
No, sir. If Commissioner Tosterson says that is fine for to be added to his motion, then with the second, that should be sufficient.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, second by Commissioner Rofolsky. Any discussion on the matter?
Will you just explain to the public what we're doing here and why we're doing?
All right.
Because it's, it is a really needed change and a problem, so I think it'd be good.
Well, this, this change to the ordinance came about by some of our appointments to different planning commissions, and these appointments, from time to time, do work for Glen County, and they also serve on, in particular, our planning commissions, both island and mainland. This, this is to state that unless there's an extenuating circumstance, they're, have no conflict of interest, and we were in a point where we would have to consider these on a case-by-case basis for every, every situation that might come up. Our surveyors and architects and contractors serve on these different commissions, but they do work in multiple different projects for different people and contractors, and it's, it's just, for clarification, it's not a conflict of interest if they're doing work to submit contracts for the county where they receive no personal benefit other than the services that they're providing under contract to the county. So it would exclude certain circumstances, say, for example, if they served on the Autumn Hall Park as an appointed board member out there, and the park was going to take bids to improve something, and these members were going to submit themselves to do that work. That would be a conflict, and it would come back to the Board. But by and large, that is not what, what happens here. So this is an effort to clear this up so that we don't have to take this on every application. The surveyor does much work for many people coming toward the county. Have I explained that adequately, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
All right, and thank you. That, that was...
We, we need these people that serve on these boards. Their expertise, we rely on them. They're in the industries, they, they, they know what the issues are better than by experience, you know?
Right. So we do have a proper motion and second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, that motion in the second is to amend 2241 and 2244 as presented.
Yes, sir. Everyone clear, ready to vote? Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. There are no, no people signed up for public comment tonight, and we have no need for executive session tonight, so we stand a chance of getting out of here with daylight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.